Call of others at this meeting, common council Tuesday, March 26, 2019. Mr. Taylor, can you help us with the pledge of allegiance?
Sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Glad to have you here on this spring break, week of common council meeting. We start with Ms. Lee's and the roll call.
Mr. Eyre, Mr. Boyce, Mr. Jensen.
President.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Six present. Mr. Vice President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Six oh, we are here and ready to go. Well, let's start with the approval of minutes for March 12th. Do we have a motion to approve?
The mood.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. I'll raise your hand for the approval of the minutes. It will be five oh and one abstention. Approval of the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is also a hand vote. Please raise your hand if you approve of tonight's agenda. Six oh. Moving forward to petitions or comments by citizens who are present. Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, Mr. Vice President, members of council. Been a little bit busy. The Asian Grill had a reopening. Frankly, there were rumors that it closed down during some remodeling and some rumors that perhaps it was not going to open, but it did and we had a reopening cutting. Nickel Plate Arts Shop, we cut the ribbon there. That's the new name of that shop is Noble Made. All the products are made by people within Noblesville. Had a retirement, nice retirement for Randy Neff serving us for 27 years. We recognized that the Parks Department at last meeting. Had a board meeting for AIM, Main Street Downtown Summit, I thought was very well attended last week. I can't remember my days. And then groundbreaking for Taylor, Gayler, pardon me, not Taylor but Gayler. Gayler, their second building, 50,000 square feet. And I think some of the council, of course, were there and a great occasion. And then today, I just returned about three. We were down at the General Assembly. Both the Senate and the House honored Jason and the whole team. Jason is the first one because he's the real tackler and lifesaver, but the whole team. That was very nice resolution by Senator Sparts and Representative, yeah.
Goodrich.
Goodrich.
Thank you. Goodrich. Boy, that's bad. Don't put that in notes. That one was there for quite a while.
Well, again, we were in the Senate and the House. Chief and three of the officers were there. Megan was there as the nurse. It was just very nice and certainly appreciated. And being down there, some of you know Chris particularly, that's a hurry and wait. You would be at 1:15, about 2:15, we got started. But anyway, but it was very nice of them to do that. I deliver meals on wheels on the 29th. That's once a year. I probably ought to do it more often, but all the mayors apparently throughout the country do that, four meals on wheels. We have a ribbon cutting at the Odyssey at the Hamilton Town Center and the Boy Scout meet here with us at City Hall on the 2nd of April. That's all I have. Are there any questions of me? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Gayler.
Yes. Gayler and Goodrich. They sort of go together. That's okay. Okay, moving forward, we have the council committee reports. I understand, Ms. Wiles?
Mr. Vice President, I have two committee reports.
Okay.
I will start with the downtown district committee. We met on March 19th and got an update on alley activation process by Aaron Head and that he's in the process and several members of the committee and economic development staff are reaching out to business owners to create a master mailing list and email communication list so that we can be communicating about the different activities and enhancements that we're planning in the downtown. So that includes the alley activation projects. We are still working on planters so that we can be having beautiful flowers in downtown Noblesville. Our initial phase will probably be the existing planters, but then come summertime, we'll have new planters in some new locations. So we're moving forward with that. Seminary Park, unfortunately, we only received one bid at our bid opening on March 15th, and that bid was close to $200,000 over what would have been estimated. So that bid was, that contract was not awarded and the Parks Department's going back and taking a look at what else might be able to be cut out or things that their staff could do versus a contractor do. So more to be coming on Seminary Park because that is one of those projects we want to see moving forward this year, but we'll just have to make sure that we're doing the right things cost-wise. Hopefully-
$200,000. What do we anticipate? Was it around three?
It was around three.
Yeah. So almost twice as much.
Right.
Kind of tells you where the construction market is.
Correct. The construction market is extremely tight right now. So hopefully everyone has noticed that we have begun installing the new black streetlights in the downtown district, and so that is a process that will continue to be moving forward. And then we also had an update on our expenditures from the downtown development fund. At this time, there are not, we don't have any requests coming to council for your approval for additional expenditures, but there might be some of those coming forward. So that's the report for the downtown district committee. Any questions?
One, I do have one, and I was in the meeting and it did not come up. One bid we received for the park, are you opening it up for another bid or is he trying to work with that one bid and lower the call? Oh, for what?
I don't have an answer to that. Mr. Howard?
I think because there is federal funding involved, it would have to be rebid. So they're going to have to redefine the scope. And the problem is later you get in the year, I think the project is just too small to get certain trades interested at all.
Too small with a hefty bill. Thank you. And you have another report?
I do have another report from the finance committee. And as has been in the last several finance committee meetings, several of our items of discussion at the committee meeting will be on tonight's agenda, so I'm not going to cover them twice. But we do have, work is ongoing with the Open Gov and Budget Builder Program, and the different departments will be working to try to be implementing their budgets into the Open Gov system for this year. And the claims come to you with a recommendation from the finance committee.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wiles. So do we, moving forward with the approval of the claims, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the claims, raise your hand. That is six oh. Thank you. Previously discussed ordinances, 120319. The council to consider ordinance 120319 and new ordinance amending the Cumberland Point Plan Development Ordinance Number 501102 regarding lot 7R of the Cumberland Point Commercial Platte at 15270 Endeavor Drive. Ms. Yelton.
Good evening. This is a request to amend the overall Cumberland Point Plan Development, which was originally adopted back in 2002. It is a mixed use development that includes both, well, includes single family, two family, and multifamily dwellings as well as industrial and commercial uses. The particular lot that we are talking about is the one that is outlined here in yellow. It is a lot that is owned by bedrock builders. They are proposing to amend the Cumberland Point Plan Development Ordinance so that they could include more lots on what appears to be a single lot. Actually, this, this will be further subdivided to basically be separate lots for each one of those buildings. But they are proposing to build their headquarters. One of these buildings will be the Bedrock Headquarters. This was a sample of some of the illustrated building elevations that could be included. Again, this was sent to the council with a favorable recommendation for adoption by the plan commission by a 10 yes, one abstention vote. With that, I will have any question, answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of Ms. Yelton?
Vice President?
Yes.
I should have asked this two weeks ago when I didn't, so I apologize. But at one point in time, there was talk of reducing the building size, but that hasn't happened. What this is really doing is, is making the modifications so that the entrances, because there are four buildings and there's just one entrance onto the street. Is that correct?
Well, yes. There are, well, when you're saying reducing the building sizes, some of the waivers, I want to say not waivers, but some of the standards that they would be modifying would include that, again, not all lots front on a dedicated street, which is required. The lot configuration kind of varies, which, you know, like I said, this will be a lot, this is a lot, here's a lot, this is a lot. Internal landscaping to each individual lot is modified, but the exterior landscaping will meet the current standards as proposed by that ordinance. We did have some discussion when they came before you in their incentive package. There was a different building size on this plan and different building sizes that were mentioned in their incentive package. Those now match.
Thank you.
The other questions of staff? No. Wafer? No. Well, we need to vote first to amend this ordinance, correct, Ms. Lee's? Okay, so we don't need a motion, the ordinance 120319. Okay. So I need a motion to approve.
Sumoot.
Let me read that.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 12-03-19. Council to consider ordinance 12-03-19 and ordinance amending the Cumberland Point Plan Development Ordinance Number 50-11-12, 2, sorry, regarding lot 7R of the Cumberland Point Commercial Platte at 15270 Endeavor Drive.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote.
No.
Okay, so I'm reading this wrong. So this is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Six zero, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, council to consider ordinance 13-03-19 and ordinance approving additional appropriations from the Parking Meter Fund for parking enforcement.
Mr. Vice President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and this ordinance is on second reading, so we've kind of discussed the specifics. The, you know, underlying issue here is that the police department is looking for additional, a new vehicle and new equipment for parking enforcement, and this is appropriating funds from the Parking Meter Fund to do so in a total amount of about $55,000. If you have any questions, I can-
Are there any questions for Mr. Spalding? No? Okay, so this is a matter for public hearing. We do need to open the public hearing. Seeing no one coming forward.
Mr. President, Vice President, I'll make a motion, seeing no one from the public coming forward, that we close the public hearing for 13-03-19.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six oh. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 13-03-19. Council will consider ordinance 13-03-19 and ordinance approving additional appropriations from the Parking Meter Fund for parking enforcement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Six zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Now to 140319, the council to consider ordinance 14-03-19 and ordinance approving additional appropriations from the general fund for the facade improvement grants. Mr. Spalding?
Yes. Again, similar to the last item, this is on second reading, so it was discussed at the last council meeting. And this is the funding piece of another agenda item we have this evening around changing a little bit of the, the structure and design of the facade improvement grant program. And in essence, what this ordinance is doing is changing the funding source for that program from what was previously being funded from the downtown TIF to being funded from general fund monies because the TIF monies are more tightly restricted with regard to how they can be used geographically, and these funds aren't. And that aligns with some of the, the new ideas for the facade program. So if you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Seeing, this is a matter for public hearing for ordinance 14-03-19.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes?
Seeing no one come forward for the public hearing, I would make a motion that we close it.
Second.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, your right hand. And this carries also six oh. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 14-03-19. Council will consider ordinance 14-03-19 and ordinance approving additional appropriations from the general fund for facade improvement grants.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is another roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Six zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's. Now moving to new ordinance for discussion, 150319. Council to consider ordinance Number 15-03-19 and ordinance repealing and replacing prior ordinances relating to the facade improvement grant program boundaries and guidelines.
Motion to introduce-
Second. Mr. Aaron Head?
Hi, Mr. Acting President, members of the council. My name is Aaron Head. I'm the Economic Development Specialist for the City of Noblesville. And tonight, we are presenting a, an ordinance that would rescind the current ordinance for facade improvement grants and replace it with some new guidelines. And just a little bit about the programs. The program is designed to stimulate investment, promote architectural appreciation, and initiate aesthetic improvements to historic buildings in Noblesville. And under the council and the mayor's leadership, $856,000 have been granted to building and business owners in downtown since the inception of the program. And that's also translated into $1.9 million of investment just in the facades of buildings in the downtown. So it's definitely something to be proud of, and it's, it's obviously a very successful program. One thing that we're looking at right now is to see how we can expand the boundaries of the program to include historic properties that aren't in this, what we call the central business district. So some examples of those properties would be like the Federal Hill School Building, the old Boys and Girls Club Building, the Craig House, Adrian's Flowers, those types of properties that are historic and commercial but are outside of the current boundaries. And one of the, one of the key points of the, of expanding those boundaries are, you know, a lot of these properties are in some of our gateway areas, and it really makes sense to try to include some of those historic properties in the program now to entice them to, allow them to have the same advantage of updating their facades when they see fit. Besides the boundary change, we're also looking at a different mechanism of how to apply for the, for the, to submit an application to apply for the program. And currently, it's kind of, they just come in when they come in, and we can approve and deny throughout the entire year. So with the new program, we're sort of aligning it with some of the other programs that we see, and that- see, and that has sort of a one cutoff date for each year. So as we promote the program, we would promote the new cutoff date or the new application deadline. This particular year, if the council sees fit to approve the new program guidelines would be May 15th, and going on from 2020 and beyond, we would turn that into March 31st. So one thing that we want to make clear is that our downtown is still the priority for this program and that when we have these specific dates in mind, people that are applying for these grants that are downtown business owners and what, what is referred to as a central business district would be reviewed first, and then after that, other properties that are historic in nature that are outside that central business district would then be reviewed and available for funding. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and it's a great program, so happy to, happy to talk about it.
Any questions?
Mr. President or Vice President, I'll just make a comment that this really came to the Economic Development Committee because we've had some business owners who have been outside of that district who have come to us saying that they'd like to be able to make, be a part of this facade grant program. So that's why these changes are being made, is so that we can make these, this program available to more businesses throughout the entire city of Noblesville.
Yeah, absolutely. We've, we have several letters on file from different property owners saying that they would love to be able to take advantage of that type of program and sort of institute some of those changes and be able to get some of that funding. And, and the other thing, too, is the, what we see in the, in the new ordinance here was, came with a favorable recommendation from the Economic Development Council Committee. So we've, we went through this process, we've really vetted this thing out, and, you know, some of these changes also, and I mentioned it before, really in line with some of the other programs that, that we've seen out there. The only difference is ours is actually a lot more robust than other communities, and you can see that, you know, we are putting a lot of attention into these historic, historic buildings.
I do have maybe more of a comment, but again, thank you for all your hard work on this. I think it's really been a good program, and I think you guys have worked with the community and worked with the, what has been so far, the downtown business district. But my question is, do you currently have a backlog? Are there, are there currently businesses in the downtown business district that are, that are in line to get a facade grant?
So as of today, we have one application that's on file, so we're proceeding as business as usual, and we also have nothing that's, besides that, nothing has actually been formally filed, but we also have several businesses that have came to us and said that they would be submitting applications this year to improve their facades.
Thank you. We have heard this, and we will move forward to, do I have to motion to introduce this, this ordinance?
No, we already did.
I thought so. My brain is not going the right way.
We'll see Aaron in two weeks.
First time I've done this, right?
Two weeks.
Yeah, we'll see you in two weeks when we will vote on this. So now moving forward to 160319, council to consider ordinance number 16-03-19 and ordinance approving additional appropriations to reestablish the motor vehicle highway fund at the 2019 adopted budget levels and establishing a public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and if you don't mind, I'll kind of do a quick, quick overarching of both of these items because they're essentially, you know, twins. They're two of the same thing for two different funds. And what they are is actions.
Spalding?
Yeah.
Hold on just a moment.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
For both, the second one, the 170319?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, now, there is a public hearing on both of these?
For the first one. Later.
Okay, okay. I thought it was just for the first one. So we will now introduce 170319, the council to consider ordinance 17-03-19 and ordinance approving additional appropriations to reestablish the Parks and Recreation Fund at the 2019 adopted budget levels and establishing a public hearing.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lee's, and now back to you, Mr. Spalding.
All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So both of these ordinances are essentially reestablishing the budgets from the MBH Fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund at the levels that you adopted in the 2019 budget back in October 13, I mean, in October 2018. And the best analogy I can give you for this is it's similar to the, the process that you have to go, that you had to go through for the cumulative capital development fund is you're not, there's actually, they're fiscally neutral actions, but there are some quirky aspects of municipal finance law in the state of Indiana that sometimes require you to go through kind of a weird two-step process to get back to where you started. And that's the case with these two funds, and really, the, the notion here is that the DLGF, they act as an oversight body for local units of government, and when they do their analysis of the budgets that all those local units of government submit, they have their own methodology that is hyperly overly cautious about making budget recommendations that's not based on the actual known facts of the fund balances that, that, that cities will have at the, at, by, by year end. And so as a consequence, when they went through our proposed 2019 budget, they made a reduction in the MBH Fund of about $210,000 and a reduction in the Parks Fund of about $101,000. So that's what they approved, and then you have the ability after the start of the year to reestablish it where it was before, and what I have since done is sent in the evidence to them that are fund balances, support what you approved back in October, and what these actions will do will accomplish that goal. So no fiscal impact.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding? None? All right. Now, we need to have a motion to establish a public hearing for April 9th, right?
For?
Sixteen.
For each one?
Yep.
Two separate motions?
Yep.
Okay, so first for the 160319, we need a motion to establish a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of opening that public hearing on April 9th, please raise your And then we need a motion for ordinance 170319 to establish a public hearing on April 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Second, another hand vote? Six oh. That wraps it up tonight, except for council comments, and I know you guys have several council comments you want to entertain tonight. Mr. O'Connor?
I do have one.
Good.
I just press release one out this afternoon, I think, but we were, the city was awarded $900,000 from Indiad for the, from the Community Crossings Initiative, so we'll use those dollars for, I think, paving, isn't that right, Mr. Mayor? I think that's what it's going to be designated for, so that's a matching program. I don't think we got any money last year, but we did this year, so that's a good thing and helps support our road improvements that need to be done on an annual basis, but that's good news.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourned.